Good evening. This is the Board of Selectmen's Regular Meeting of November 19th, 2025. It is 7:04 and earlier this evening we have a public hearing, which time we did recite the Pledge of Allegiance at the public hearing. So we'll just move right into the agenda. Are there any additional agenda and consent calendar items? Are there any public delegations that would like to address the Board of Selectmen this No delegations. All right. Can I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November 5th, 2025?
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 5th, 2025 as submitted.
I'll second.
May I have a second? Thank you. Are there any corrections or comments, additions or deletions to the minutes? No? Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, motion carries and they're approved. Next, do I hear a motion to approve the special meeting of November 6th, 2025?
Move to approve the special meeting minutes of November 6th, 2025 as submitted.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor of approving the special meeting minutes of November 6th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, motion carries. All right. Next on our agenda is the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the consent calendar from November 19th, 2025 in the amount of
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Looks pretty routine. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of approving the consent calendar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. Next on old business is to schedule a town meeting for December 3rd, 2025 for the Board of Education, Special Education Expansion and Development. That's the seed grant. Do I hear a motion?
Move the following. Notice is hereby given of a special town meeting of the Town of East Lime to be held on Wednesday, December 3rd, 2025 at 7:00 p.m. at the East Lime Town Upper Hall Meeting Room for the following purposes. One, to approve a special appropriation in the amount of $63,300 representing a special education expansion and development seed grant from the state of Connecticut to be used by the Board of Education in accordance with Public Act 25-67, Section 7. Two, to transact any other business proper to come before the meeting dated at East Lime, Connecticut, this 19th day of November, 2025, East Lime Board of Selectmen.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right. Next on the agenda tonight is discussion and possible action, automated ticketing ordinance. We have a copy of the proposed ordinance. We've had a chance to review it. We've had an opportunity to submit questions to the chief of police who was here tonight. I would invite the chief to approach the podium if he would like to address the board and maybe field questions.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to talk about the town ordinance. I'm primarily here to answer questions that you may have about the program itself and the town attorneys here who may be able to give advice or answer questions about the town ordinance itself. But this began years ago as our state lawmakers recognized the need to address speeding in most of the towns municipalities across the state. These are the complaints that as police chiefs we feel routinely, probably the most often compared to other complaints. Most times, members of the Board of Select people, Boards of Finance, even Boards of Police Commissioners don't realize how often these complaints come in and how the different locations vary throughout different towns, not only just main roads, school areas, more rural streets, as well as populated roadways. So in 2023, our state lawmakers gave municipalities the authority to pass the town ordinance, allowing for the creation of a speed enforcement camera program. I feel that a few of the questions that were presented by board members, and I will highlight a few of those, if I miss any, I will certainly stay up here and answer any questions you have after I touch on these. One of the consistent questions was the data that we use to issue the fines is that data shared with insurance companies or the Department of Motor Vehicles. And it's not, it's a system, a program where a vendor that's selected installs the cameras, provides a speed study data, crash analysis data, works with the police department to put together the proposal and the application to the Department of Transportation. Once this is established and operational, the police department receives the data from the vendor itself. We don't house any of the data. We don't store it on site. We don't access it otherwise to the extent where we are able to review and approve the actual violations. So any of that information from the vendor or from the police department, none of it is shared with insurance companies or the Department of Motor Vehicles. So no rates will go up if you commit a speeding violation. There won't be any issues with your license or your driving record as a result of this Excuse me, I'm just going to reference some of the questions that were presented to me. So will the police department set up a program to allow payment of the fines using credit cards? We don't set up anything. None of our employees will be taking payment of the fines. The vendor that's selected sends the actual ticket out to the owner of the motor vehicle that's used in the speeding violation. That owner receives the fine. They go on a portal with the instructions on the back of the ticket explaining where to access that portal, how to appeal the fine if they believe an appeal is justified, and how to pay the fine. The vendor then sends an ACH transaction to the Town of East Lime with the revenue that's made from the fines themselves. The costs associated with the program, how that affects taxpayers and the town itself, there is no cost associated with the program in terms of tax base. The vendor that's selected, there's a vendor that was selected by the Council of Governments. There's a number of other vendors in existence, but the vendor that's selected will, like I said, pay for the speed studies. Do the analytics work with the Town of East Lime and the police department to go from the beginning of the program, which is the town ordinance establishment through the Department of Transportation application process, through a continuous process of more public hearings, once locations are identified, to get information out to the public, to explain to them the locations where these cameras will be placed and why those cameras will be placed there. And they don't charge the town at all. There is an administrative fee to each fine, and that's how the vendors make their money. That's how they maintain the program, maintain the equipment, calibrate the equipment for the speeding violations if there is an appeal, provide the signage, pay for the electricity that the cameras generate, and pay for the permitting fees and installation and construction. The appeal of the ticket that's sent to the owner of the vehicle that committed the violation, if somebody wants to appeal the ticket itself, the ordinance spells out certain situations where an appeal would be one, but the person in receipt of the ticket can file an appeal through that portal as outlined on the back of the ticket. The town will establish a hearing officer. I believe the reference to the existing town ordinance is 150.036. I'm sure the town attorney can speak at length about that existing town ordinance better than I can, but there is a process in place for an official to hear the appeals themselves. Placement of the cameras, so like I said earlier, some speed studies have been done, more speed studies will be done in collaboration with crash data analysis with a focus initially, especially on our school zone areas and adjacent areas for the public safety in general, but specifically the public safety of the school-aged children and the buses coming and going from the schools. So those locations will be identified. Public hearings will take place for information dissemination on those locations themselves. Again, more cost to the town. Potential revenue, I could touch on in just a few minutes. There are projections. They're certainly not factual at this point, but there are some projections I could share with you if you'd like. Other towns that implemented this process, I know Marlboro, as select board member McKenzie stated in the last meeting, was the first in the state to establish this program. They've announced their revenue generated months, I believe. They were reported to traditional media throughout the state. They've also talked about some of the pitfalls during the process and some of the advantages to the program. Since then, I know that New Haven has been approved. There was an article in paper today outlining the establishment of the town ordinance, the application to DOT and the vendor they selected. I know that Fairfield, Milford, Hampden, North Haven, Middletown are all in the process, either the town ordinance phase of the process or the application phase of the process. But what you're going to see is the vast majority of municipalities in the state passing this ordinance for overall public safety and working through the process in a number of different ways with a number of different public hearings for information dissemination and consideration on how to, if appropriate, to expand this program. The impact on the current staffing at the East Lime Police Department, as I'm sure you're all aware, we are dramatically understaffed at the police department without this program. This is something that I believe as the chief, it's worthwhile taking on the extra work because of the public safety levels that it provides to this town. Part of the town ordinance is consistent with the law that was passed in 2023 where the revenue from the fines are restricted funding. One of the restricted categories for the funding is for the facilitation of this program. So additional staff, if they need to be hired, additional clerical staff and/or police officers that could be funded from the revenue that this program generates. Before I get into any of the speed study results or the revenue projections, does anybody have any questions at this point?
So you said the owner receives a ticket and then the owner can go to a portal. So my question is, we have a lot of people in this town who are older who don't use computers, that kind of thing. Is there a way you can do it like the old-fashioned way without a computer? Do you know?
I'm sure it could be done. The vendor that I've worked with in the past, which is the vendor that won the RFP, RFQ from the Council of Governments, they will tailor make the ticket itself, the program itself. I know you got a question. I think you were half joking, but you commented about your speeding patterns at the last meeting.
Yeah?
So we could...
I think you go 10.
10.
Well, last night I actually said great.
10 is not...
So everyone has opinions on that, but they could tailor the program to our needs. They could set the ordinance outlines consistently with the state law that 10 or more miles per hour over the speed limit would be an infraction would be this ticket, but we can make it 11 miles per hour over the speed limit. That's just one example of how we can do that.
No.
We're not going to. It's just an example of how we can do that.
What happens if somebody doesn't pay, like the ticket?
It's a good question.
That's a good question.
What happens if someone isn't going to pay the ticket?
Okay. Thank you.
And maybe the town attorney can opine on this. I know that other municipalities have decided to send the fines that are unpaid to collection agencies. Some towns have decided to pursue the fines in civil court, but it'd be up to the municipality.
Would that be something that's spelled out in the ordinance then?
It could be, but it is not.
Okay.
Should it be?
I think that's up to the board to decide.
Okay.
All right. Okay. And then before you have these speed cameras, will these signs alerting people that there is a camera, you know, coming up or something?
There will be. Again, consistent with the town ordinance and a law passed, there has to be in both directions or as many directions approach the speed camera location. They have to be conspicuous signs. I believe that the sign size is outlined in the law, but I could be wrong on that. But there will be large signs saying that you're approaching the speed camera enforcement zone. We have to notify GPS providers like Waze and Google Maps so that if you're using GPS, it will notify you on the GPS that you're approaching that location. And again, the goal of this program isn't to generate a tremendous amount of revenue through fines. It's to reduce the speeding in town.
I just have one question. Can you move them around? So will you be able to move in different areas or will they just be set in certain areas?
They're not portable. They're designed to be set in specific locations. In each location that we want to have a speed camera, we would have a separate application to the Department of Transportation following a town hearing, a public hearing, excuse me, for information dissemination, more speed studies, crash data analysis. And we have to prove our efforts that we have made in the past to reduce speed in that area. So it's not a quick process.
Excellent. Thank you.
So another question, I think it was in the questions. As people are approaching, I just know sometimes if you see a policeman on the side of the road, like even when I'm going the speed limit, I hit the brake. Like everybody hits their brake because it's like, oh my God, there's a policeman over there. You know what I mean? So is that happening where like people are like getting rear-ended or something like that because of like trying to slam the brakes on? Like is that, is there any information you know about like other towns where that would be occurring?
So it's a new program. Marlboro was the first town to implement this. I don't, I haven't heard of any data or situations that show that, but it is human nature for people to slow down when they think a police officer is ahead or a speed camera is ahead, but that's the intention of the program. If there is an accident caused by that, it would actually not be that person's fault. It'd be the person behind them because they're not traveling at a safe distance.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. Thank you. As I was reading this over, I thought it was very interesting that this information cannot be retained after a certain period of time. So presumably the reason that we have laws such as this is to prevent further occurrences. But as the records have to be destroyed, then what's the incentive for someone to not, to just go on and then have the next offense and then go on, have the next offense with no fallout except pay, which is really a minimum amount of money?
Comes up though, right?
It goes up for a second offense, and after one year of no offenses, it reverses back to a first offense situation? I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, in other words, there's no, there's no real penalty except the money. And you, as a police officer, have no way of knowing whether this person continually continues to be a danger to the public because you can't keep any records.
So there are records kept to the extent of if somebody is given a fine, given a ticket, and then that's documented in the system. Three months later, they are speeding again, they're given a second ticket. That's what indicates a $75 fine instead of the $50 fine for the second offense. If two months later they commit another violation, it'd also be $75. So that's tracked as far as if you or if somebody's given a ticket. What's not retained is the specific data itself, the photos and the information about the speeds following a period where somebody can appeal the fine itself. And that's just for protecting data, protecting information. I'm not sure if that answered the question.
And the ticket corresponds to the owner of the car, not necessarily the driver?
Correct.
Is that correct?
It is.
So it's owner based, not driver based?
Yeah.
And that's not the only...
I'm concerned. I have two, I have a college student. Oh my God.
Yeah, it's starting to worry me a little bit here.
She said that, not me. I'm fine.
It sounds like you are.
All right. We're kind of like at a halfway point, right? This is just a pause before something else happens. Do you have more to this or is our question period?
I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. So you said we don't store the data for East Line. That means we just, we don't have access to it at all?
Correct.
So that all goes into some proprietary database, which we have no, we can't access unless we get requests. We don't know if hackers can get it, what their safeguards are.
Correct. Yeah. So even if we get requests, we can't produce anything that we don't have. So we don't store the data. We're not the owners of the data. We just facilitate a review of the snapshot of the image that was taken, the speed that they were clocked at, and we approve it. And the same vendor who installed the equipment and calibrated the equipment, they send out the ticket themselves.
So disparities existed all different levels within the criminal justice system, and we know this because crime statistics are readily available through, you know, a variety of different data sets. I'm wondering what would be the public's opportunity for oversight in this case, just to check on whether biases are occurring? Is there any mechanism that you could see for some kind of statistical analysis?
No, for a number of reasons. One, the ticket is issued to the owner. We don't identify who the driver is. We don't have any information about the driver themselves. It could be anyone. So we wouldn't have accurate information if we had information at all. But to your point, I think you bring up a good point, and cameras remove negative interactions between police and the public. There's no existence of an interaction at all, so there's no opportunity for negative interaction. It also removes any human bias that police officers and/or the public have. So I think, within the category that you're touching on, I think this program is better suited for the public in general when it comes to biases, or unfortunately, there's no analysis opportunity for who is being issued the ticket themselves.
Right. This was something that kind of came up when we started going to automated mortgage approvals, that the similar discussion was, this is automated, there will be no human bias, but reviews have found that there is bias inherent in those systems because they were programmed by people. And they were able to prove that because that data was readily available. So as much as I would love to believe that this will reduce bias, I'm worried that it will create a bias that we can't even see exists because we don't have access to the data. Is there a way for us to specifically say like, give us the data, give the data to academics, let's study this? Or is it just going on some kind of safe?
I don't know the answer to that question. I know we don't have access to the data itself. The vendor does.
And doesn't the data get destroyed after a certain amount of time?
It does. It's purged, yeah, after the opportunity for an appeal.
Yeah.
I just have, we all asked questions, but I had to, I had asked a couple of questions about the cost of the town and then possible revenue. Clearly, this is not why we would want to move forward with this. It's definitely public safety, and we do have quite a few areas in town that have been identified where people just fly. You had said in the answer that you had implemented this program in North Haven. So what was, what did that look like and was it successful there?
It's not fully implemented. The, North Haven passed the town ordinance.
Okay.
They are currently in the application phase with Department of Transportation.
Oh, okay. All right.
So the ordinance phase comes first and then the application phase?
Correct.
That's the order of operations?
Correct.
Okay, I have a couple. Are you finished?
You go.
Okay. I'm looking under Section 74-10, Management of Personally Identifiable Information. And I see under subsection D, any information and other data gathered from automated safety devices shall be subject to disclosure under the Freedom of Information Act, except that no personally identifiable information may be disclosed. So what, so what is, so what's available then under the Freedom of Information Act?
It's a good question, and maybe the town attorney would like to give an answer on that before I turn the mic over to the town attorney. Like I said, we don't retain the data. We don't own the data. As a matter of producing data, I'm not sure, and that's what we can get clarification on.
Okay. So I'll go back to that then, but it seems puzzling that under the Freedom of Information Act, but, oh, people know how to, who can, who can access that? So if that's one, then before he leaves, the second one is that annual calibration of the equipment is required. Do we already have the capability to do that?
We don't do that. The vendor does that.
The vendor handles all of that.
Yes.
Completely out of our hands. Good. Then something else we don't have to bother.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm set.
Thank you.
Did you want to throw it to the town attorney or do you want to keep going?
Did you have something specific for somebody?
Yes. So I'm curious, going back to data, is there any data in town that is besides anecdotal where people, you know, go really fast on this road? Is there any data that's driving this decision to begin this? I mean, I know it's an option for us, and other towns are kind of lining up to get involved, but I'm wondering if, if this is a solution in search of a problem. I know that pedestrian fatalities have gone up increasingly, but I'm not entirely convinced that that's connected directly to speed as much it is to car size and, you know, the absence of bike lanes and sidewalks. So I guess what I'm asking is, we do the study after we set up the ordinance. That just seems like putting the cart before the horse. Is there data for what's going on in town that kind of says, we need this?
Sure. So just to clarify that, studies have been done already. The official studies that will be released are done to identify and support the specific locations. The town ordinance is the foundation that gives the municipality the basis to implement this program. In terms of data that we have, we have crash data analysis at the police department. Every police department has the ability to analyze information in our RMS and CAD systems. I could reference some, some speed studies for you. As far as convincing you that speeding in school zones isn't dangerous for our children, you know, I'm not a salesperson. I'm not going to sell the program. This program actually increases the amount of work that the police department does. There's no specific benefit to me. So I'm just here to present the answers to the questions that I could answer, and I'm willing to manage and oversee this program if it's implemented. There's a lot of work that goes into this, but I can give you specific numbers as far as what this, a couple of the speed studies showed us, if that's what you're looking for.
That is what I'm looking for.
Sure.
I don't need to be sold. I'm all about data and science. So if it's present in the numbers that this is an issue that is affecting safety of people in our town, I'm on board. But if that doesn't exist, or if that, if those numbers don't show that, I'm just curious why this step would be taken.
Sure. So you have to forgive me. I didn't bring my glasses with me, so.
I have like 12 pairs up here.
You all can identify.
So this, this isn't one of the school zones. I'm not going to identify which schools or which streets at this point. Oh, no, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. For one of the school zones with a posted speed limit of 35 miles per hour, each one of these speed studies was done over a five-day period with no markings, no signage. This is just raw, current... With no markings, no signage, this is just raw current data. The vehicle count was thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and eight. The number of violations was ten thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six. The daily average of violations was two thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine. This is a location that's not a school zone. The weekly count was fifty-seven thousand and change vehicles. Number of violations was over fourteen thousand. Daily average of two thousand, six hundred. You know, some people are starting to do the math with the fines and we'll get to that. This is a location that we didn't find a tremendous amount of violations. Another school zone, sixty-nine thousand vehicles over the five days with only two hundred and sixty-seven violations found. This is another school zone location, fifty-two thousand vehicles, two thousand, eight hundred violations, daily average of five sixty.
Chief of violations, ten miles an hour over?
Yes.
Okay.
Another school zone, sixty-eight thousand vehicles with five hundred and twenty-nine violations. And, you know, that's considered good, right? Well, but that's a daily average of one hundred and six violations.
I have to admit these.
Yeah.
I have to admit, I, these numbers are really hard to absorb. Is there a way that that could be made available to us?
Sure.
If I could make a suggestion, chief and board. So any information that you would like from the chief or from anyone, you can schedule a public hearing. And by the time we get to that public hearing, he would have your answers for you or whomever would have their answers for you. But I think it's, it's important at least that you schedule a public hearing to have your questions answered and there's time to do that.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to thank you. I mean, we thought you were going to be here at the last meeting. We decided to send some questions over, a lot of us did. You were super pumped on it. And all of the Q and A is going to go into minutes. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for waiting through that public hearing.
Sure, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Okay, so was that the?
Is there something interesting?
I guess I. I just wanted to remind you that, that you're not voting on this ordinance tonight. The process works in that you have a public, you schedule a public hearing, you have a public hearing. And after the hearing from the public, you vote on whether or not you want this. So there, there is time to have any other remaining questions you have or any data until the public hearing.
We saw an opportunity for that.
Yes.
Okay. With that then, should we move to scheduling the public hearing?
Yep.
Yes, please.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Move the following. Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the Eastline Board of Selectmen immediately following a town meeting to commence at seven PM on Wednesday, December third, twenty twenty-five. At the Eastline Town Hall, one oh eight Pennsylvania Avenue, Nyanic, Connecticut. To consider the ordinance titled, quote, "Ordinance Authorizing Use of Automated Traffic Enforcement Safety Devices," end quote. Copies of the full text of the proposed ordinance are on file for public inspection at the Office of the Eastline Town Clerk. One oh eight Pennsylvania Avenue, Nyanic, Connecticut. And at www.eeltownhall.com, to which reference may be had. Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard. The Board of Selectmen may make changes to the language of the proposed ordinance as a result of information presented in the public hearing. Dated at Eastline, Connecticut on this nineteenth day of November, twenty twenty-five, Eastline Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
A second.
All right, any further discussion?
Yes, could you repeat the date of the public hearing?
Wednesday, December third, twenty twenty-five, at the Eastline Town Hall.
So just to be clear, there would be a, there's a scheduled town meeting then? And then there would be a public hearing and then a Board of Selectmen meeting? That's correct, okay.
Yeah.
What time did it start? What time would the public hearing begin?
Probably five.
So town meeting?
So there'd be the town meeting and immediately following that would be the public hearing and then immediately following that would be.
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting, yep.
And that would be our first one of the new term with a new board, correct?
That's right.
Correct.
That's correct. Any further discussion? So seconded, right? So all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're going to mark over the appointments to the CIP committee. We'll wait till after the new term. Item E is we want to add appointment term expiration for the pension board.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, I move to add the term expiration date of January third, twenty twenty-eight to the appointment sheet. Of Sarah Rolfe, as the employee designated representative to the pension board.
I'm, I'm sorry, we.
To the.
Point order, what, where are we in this?
Uh, two E.
What happened to two D?
Uh, we, we.
It was tabled.
Tabled, okay, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yep. So we table the, and so now we have a pending motion and add appointment term expiration.
Okay.
Just to correct.
I need a second.
And we need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, all right, pretty straightforward. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, next, three A, we're going to table that one. Discussion on possible and possible action of water and sewer bonding. We're also going to table three B, discussion of possible action appropriation of NIPS funds. Of twelve thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars for catch base and cleaning. We really need Joe Bogart here for that, I think.
May I, may I ask why? So I know that you just said that in regards to Joe, but why are we tabling A? And when are you planning to table it to? What date?
Let's see, I think we put that over to the next meeting?
To the third.
To the third. It's just Ben North really needs to address it and Kevin Gervais, both of them are.
Okay.
Not available, so. For that reason.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. And with NIPS funding, we need Joe.
So that'd be twelve, three?
For both.
Didn't we already approve that though?
Last year.
That was last year, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
More NIPS funds every year, how about that? Okay. Next on the agenda is item C, discussion of possible action. Discussion of possible action regarding Arc's Wireless Infrastructure LLC and new singular wireless PCS. LLC's application for a certificate of environmental compatibility and public need for the construction, maintenance and operation of a telecommunications facility. And associated equipment located at three oh six Flanders Road, Eastline, Connecticut. So at this time, it appears, and Attorney Collins already explained that we have several options, three, four options really. Did you want to revisit that with us or are we prepared to move? We do have a proposed motion. That microphone, there's something wrong with.
I should say, Mr. First Selectman, that. You can decide tonight what opt, I just drafted this as broadly as I could. But certainly the selectmen have the opportunity to decide tonight what course you want to take. And I didn't include the do nothing course.
Understood. So why don't we just, Don, I'll start with you.
We need to, we need to. Well, why don't I?
We just want to discuss, I think we want to discuss them.
Before we make the motion, because I think we want to explain what they are to everybody?
What the options are.
What the different options are.
Please.
Discuss them and then we'll make the motion once, if we decide on a course of action. And then I would just include what we're going to do and not everything in the motion, is that correct?
So, so you can choose to have a discussion and then act on it tonight by giving the first selectmen authority? Or as a, as the board, you can decide which option you want to choose? And in that case, I would just resolve to authorize. Or resolve to seek intervenor status or enter a limited appearance? Or attend the hearing before the citing council to make oral arguments or do nothing?
And what is the time limit on this? Now that the public hearing is closed, action has to be within a certain amount of time, correct?
Well, the hearing before the commission is January twenty-ninth. And the schedule should have been given to you in your packets. I do have it here.
January twenty-ninth, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we definitely have to have.
My suggestion is that you not put this piece off since you were all here. You're going to have a different board. And you were all here to listen to the presentations and this is probably too big of an issue to not decide tonight. While you all heard all of this.
Oh, fresh.
To, to make a decision which course, if any, you want to take.
Okay.
So just to clarify, so if we decide, say, to do A or B or C, then we would just resolve just to do that one?
Correct.
We don't have to mention the others in the motion then?
That's correct.
All right, that's what I thought.
Yes, so it would be resolved to enter a limited appearance on behalf of the town and submit written comments.
Whatever one of them.
Exactly.
Another alternative is to just to. Let, resolve to let the first selectmen decide which of those.
Correct.
Way that we want to go.
That's right, so you can.
But it may very well be we're able to decide tonight.
Yes.
So then.
I can, I should tell you that the first option, option A, is, is a very expensive option. If, if cost concerns you.
That's to seek intervenor.
Yes, yes, it's basically a trial.
Yeah.
Right, I don't think that we're there, that's just my, my input on that, just, just from the room, right? I mean, if our room was completely flooded with community members that were really having a difficult time on the placement of it and all of the different issues, then I would say possibly yes. But that's not what I got tonight, right? I mean, I have my own questions clearly and lots of others and the aesthetics and could it be a different spot? And, you know, a lot of my thought went on to the business owners, what's the impact going to be on them, you know, that kind of thing. But the business owner was here. So if the business owner really had some concerns, they can stand up and they can state it, right?
Yeah.
And I didn't see that nor did I hear it. So for myself, something like of this magnitude, when they say that they came forward to our town back in June, then July, and didn't hear anything. That's concerning for me, right? And for the board, right? We could have had a lot more time to have discussion, commentary, Q and A, all these questions, right? Because a lot of questions do come up versus more of a rushed type of situation where, okay, we got to do something here, right? So I, I don't, I don't prefer, I don't prefer that type of communication. I like things to be brought forward. You, you have to respond to people. And when you don't respond to people, they get angry and they get frustrated, right? And that's not, it's not the kind of people you want in your group. So just moving forward, if we can do that and have, you know, response time and knowledge of kind of what's going on, I would greatly appreciate that. Also, the application, if I need to read an application, please give it to me, okay? I shouldn't have to come down to the town hall and sit here for six hours or five hours to go through a book, all right? Give me the information that I need. Secondly, or actually thirdly now. I don't think it's a great spot. I do think that it's not that aesthetically nice, right? I think that Mr. Mulholland brought up a lot of great points. But I would not want to put ourselves in a position where we're going to go up against that. We will lose, I already know that, just because in that side of town, we need coverage, right? They're going to say do it and we're going to, we're going to end up spending, I have no interest in, you know, loosely spending taxpayer money. That's not an option for me. So the other option was to send comments, is that accurate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe some other thoughts that we could throw out? Kind of that went along with maybe what Mr. Mulholland was saying. But that's where I'm at.
So you're thinking comments?
That's what I'm thinking.
Don, what's your thought?
I was fine with everything until Mr. Mulholland showed us the hurdles that were in front of us as far as zoning. He seems very well versed on that. So I'll side with, I'll side with Ms. Carlson on that, please. The comments, we would submit comments, commentary, the concerns we've talked about tonight. Yes, we could boil those down to several comments and submit that to the, to the.
We can make suggestions at that point too, Tracy, or no? Yes, okay.
Yeah, and we can compile them and then forward them. Yeah, what's your thought?
I think I would suggest that any comments that you want made or any department that you want to weigh in, that, that you ask. For instance, Mr. Mulholland to write something up. Or, or any of you who want to have comments or. If Gary Geisell, if any of the different departments within the town want to weigh in, that, that maybe the first selectmen give them or you now, give them a deadline by which they have to do it. To get it into writing. I'm assuming that I would be the one to prepare those comments for either the first selectmen's review or the whole board's review. So that, that there be a process by which it's done efficiently so that people do reply as you requested.
I like that, can we do that, Dan? Thank you so much.
Yeah, so it would be good to ask Mr. Mulholland and then.
And Mr. Geisell?
I could ask about the wetlands, but I think there's also like the upwind review area and the aquifer there. So yeah, I think I would want to comment to Mr. Geisell also.
I wonder if Mr. Art Carlson might have some good input on the, the aquifer? I'm not too sure, I'm just going to throw that out there and do that, went up pretty well. He has a lot of good information on that.
I think Mr. Geisell would know.
Two?
Yeah, that's what I would.
I, I think, I think we need cell coverage, I think we need the coverage, okay? So if we ask our zoning officer to put together his list, I think that would possibly poo poo a lot of the progress that needs to be made. Regardless of where it is, but I think a lot of progress would not be made if we, we put a lot of hurdles up there and people say, oh yeah. I think we've determined that we need the coverage. Okay, and so, and then also too, that emergency antennas could be on there as well. And I think we shouldn't put a hurdle in front of that. What do you recommend?
I think it's important that the board of selectmen know that the zoning rules do not apply.
I don't know.
And, and that the citing council is not required to look at them, they won't. What they typically decide, they, they try to be very respectful of towns and what they want, in my experience from the twice, two times that I've dealt with them. But it's also important to know that when there's a coverage issue, like there appears to be here, for anyone who drives up the Boston Post Road through Flanders Four Corners, we know it. That, that the citing council is very sympathetic to that. But they will, they will also consider alternate locations. But it seems like a lot of alternate locations, we heard tonight, the homeowner wasn't interested. Maybe you want to have the first selectmen reach out to Eversource and say, why are you decommissioning that tower? Why not just keep it there, it's already there? Maybe it wouldn't offend people as much as maybe this one does. But there are things that, that you can do to be proactive. To try to. Either get a different site. But I, I can say, based on my experience, the, the citing council is very lenient in situations like this, when it's in a commercial district already. I think Brainerd Road was different because it was in such a rural area, it's right on the water.
Oh, yeah.
They may not be as sympathetic as they were in that case.
Well, that's why I said if that, if we had even tried to fight it, we would lose it. That, we would, and we'd lose money, too, at the very same time. So I think it's, I think it's worth putting, you know, comments forward and different options, you know, to try to be proactive, you know?
Yes.
And see what happens.
And I'm sure you've all been keeping track, or at least heard of the, what's going on down in Fairfield and Bridgeport. And with those monopoles that they're, they tried to install. And the, the entire towns of Fairfield and the city of Bridgeport came out en masse to object. And they filed for intervenor's status, and they won. But there were fifteen monopoles going up.
Right, it's different.
Uh, and they were each over a hundred and fifty feet high. And now, the, the applicant is appealing that decision. So I think the town has a tough road to hoe here. But that's not to say that, that if, if you want to weigh in, I encourage you to do that because the citing council is, is often receptive to what the town wants.
Thank you.
Yeah, my feeling is, I think we have an obligation to weigh in. We heard, uh, from some citizens, uh, we heard from Mr. Mulholland, I, I think it's our duty to at least appraise the citing council of, of some of the concerns. And I think probably the most efficient way to do it would be provide comments, written comments to them that they can look at and consider. I don't think intervenor's status will get us anywhere. I think it will be an expensive journey for us that won't give us a result that maybe we, we even want. If there is a feeling and it seems that maybe, maybe this is a good thing to have this tower in that location. So I think comments, and we'll assemble them and, uh, that's my feeling, and provide them to the council prior to the date.
And that is written comments, not comment publicly at the hearing.
Written comments.
Yeah, written, not oral.
Not oral comments, we just submit a packet of, of written questions or comments.
So, this is, I think, one of those moments where you have to balance competing interests in a community. Like there is an intense interest in East Lime, in maintaining the character and quality of the town. And I think in a lot of people's minds, uh, we are a small town. But, um, as we continue to grow and, and demands, um, grow ever larger on our infrastructure, we have to weigh the fact that we need this infrastructure in town to maintain the quality of life that people expect. However, before, um, you know, issuing a, an opinion on this, I would, I would just ask, was the sample representative tonight, we had, you know, a few people said, you know, it's kinda cool, someone said, no, I don't like it. But that was, I mean, Bridgeport turned out en masse. I think East Lime would have turned out. I don't know, had we, had we done more footwork or got out ahead of this thing. I don't know if the, the folks in the room tonight necessarily represented the will of the town. So it's hard for us to say what the will of the town is.
Well, I think, I think that's.
This was on the.
I'm sorry, no, you go ahead.
Okay. So it was on the town website, there was also an article on the front page of the paper, and it said when, and the date, and time. So I think if people were, were concerned, they would show up. And speaking to Attorney Collins, she was saying that in the other, was it two thousand, I think, twelve and fifteen, you said?
Ten maybe?
I forget.
One was two thousand and ten, the second one was two thousand and fifteen. Remember, too, that the comments, you have time. You know, you, you may get a flurry of calls tomorrow in the first selectmen's office as more and more people find out about this, and you can alter your comments based on that.
Can we add a comment type of page, or comment something on the website? I know back when we were doing the school renovations, we were able to do that, where people could give input. That way we would have that data, and we could utilize it, um, moving forward.
Right on the town website?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just for this specific topic, or for anything?
Well, I think it would be great for anything, to be honest with you, it may be great for the ordinance. I mean, I think it's, I think it's great.
No, but that's.
You know, but it gives people that opportunity, who might not have known, or could not come, to, you know, give their voice. It would probably be fairly easy, and I, I do know with the Board of Ed, when we did that years ago, it was super beneficial. So, great idea for this, and then anything else moving forward?
I would agree with that. I think it's our job to make this as representative as possible. And if we wanna have representative government, we have to go out of our way to find out what people are thinking and feeling. And I can tell you that the folks who are stakeholders with kids at Care-a-Lot, right now, are probably reading stories and tucking their kids in bed and not thinking, oh, you know, I should go downtown and let everybody know about my feelings about a, a cell tower.
So you like the idea of maybe a link on the website? Yeah, let's do, let's do that.
Is that how it would be done, just a link, or, well, we'll find out.
I think at the very least, you could post a big notice, um, on the town's website that it's going in, rather than the address, say what the business is there. Because, you know, I don't know what three oh six Flanders Road is, but when people say behind, uh, what's it called?
Smokey and Grady's.
Smokey and Grady's. That, oh, I know where that is, that, that that would help the public know that this is happening. And then encourage them, right on the homepage, if you have comments, please reach out to the first selectmen's office, or via email.
Right here, I mean, because if, if we have three different places, then we're not gonna know. I mean, if they, they reach out to zoning, or planning.
No, just a centralized link, right on the website, boom, it's right there.
Yeah.
User-friendly.
So we're not looking at three different places.
Yeah.
Okay.
We want it user-friendly. If it's not user-friendly, people back off, and they're like, I give up, they're like, no.
So we could add that right to the.
Yeah, and you can actually add the link to the presentation that was on, something that Sandy showed me. That way somebody can go in, they can read it, and they can look and see the pictures, and all that stuff. And any comments that you get, you can gather and you can add them.
Yeah, we can.
It should be like where it pops up on the homepage.
It's right there.
Where you don't have to like search for it.
And maybe the link to the actual application.
Well, that's what I meant.
It is, is better, I, for the public hearing, attached the link to the entire website, to this docket number, so that people could read it all. But I think the actual application, the link to the application is, is really what would benefit the public.
And that's the thick booklet that we got, that's the application.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
And just to complete my comments, I just wanted to say that, uh, Care-a-Lot is a really special part of the community. Both my kids went there, and they do a great job, and I would hate for them to feel like they were left out of the decision-making process here, since they are within the, the shadow of this thing. The last bit I would like to point out is, and I, I don't know if I can quantify this really, but I've, I've been teaching science and math for twenty-five years. And, uh, generally, you can kinda get the sense when someone has not fully done their homework. And when I saw that their, their numbers were starting to conflict, my intuition as a math teacher went up. And it, I said it did not inspire confidence, I would just like to underscore that. For something that's this important to, to so many people, and, and poses a fifty-year, um, you know, timeline, potential timeline, and an impact of, of people all around, I would, I would have liked to have felt that they did their homework a little more thoroughly than they did. Still not entirely sure how those numbers work, where they came from. But I suppose that's not entirely their job to explain every detail to me, but I just wanted to put that out there again. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Tracy. Roseanne?
And I'm in favor of submitting a comment.
Comments, written comments.
I'm unanimous with the board so far.
Roseanne, what's your feeling?
I think that comments that have been put forth, I think that's the right path to take. And I think that, um, intervenus status, I think, I think it just dragged it out too much. We're interested more in, in, uh, feedback from the public.
Yeah. Okay. So are, are we of the same mind, then, that we should, uh, pass a resolution, a motion tonight, to submit written comments?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Are you able to cobble that together with?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Proposed cell tower, three oh six Flanders Road, move the following. Resolve to authorize the first selectmen to have council enter a limited appearance on behalf of the town, that includes submission of written comments at any time up to thirty days after the public hearing, before the citing council on the application.
Excellent.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? If there isn't, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we will update the website to make it, uh, make it easy for people to, uh, give us their thoughts and comments. And we'll assemble that, and Tracy, I'll work with you, uh, in Sandy, and we'll put it together, and we'll get it to the citing council.
Great. Thanks, Tracy.
Maybe someone, if, if Mr. Debo was concerned about Care-a-Lot, someone should reach out to them.
Yeah, I think we should, or, and the people that have children that go there. Yeah, maybe make a special effort for Care-a-Lot.
I see that no one from the newspaper is here tonight.
I'm sure they're watching.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Trace.
Okay, well, that's, I think that's a good approach. Next is our Board of Selectmen twenty twenty-six meeting schedule. Do we hear a motion?
Do we need to do this now, or do we need to wait till after?
We need to do it now, because it's asked to be filed within thirty days of the first meeting in January, which is like January third.
Okay.
So we, we should do it now.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. I'll move to approve the Board of Selectmen twenty twenty-six meeting calendar as presented.
A second.
Okay, um.
Second?
We have a second, we have two, okay. Hey, we've had a chance to look it over, everybody's, uh, let's see, any big problems? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, carries. Ex officio, um. Was that, oh, yes.
Wait, that.
Yeah, the, uh, ex officio appointments were, yeah, that's gonna be taken. And then the next is ex officio reports.
So we're tabling it for what reason, and we're tabling it to when?
To December third.
Okay.
Yeah, December third.
New competition.
When we have the report. Yeah, after the swearing in.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, um, so now, ex officio reports.
I'm all set.
You're good, all right. Jason?
Can you give me one second, can we start down there?
We can start down.
I do have something.
Don, do you have anything?
We'll skip you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, yeah, go.
Oh, okay. I attended a library, uh, Board of Trustees meeting on November tenth. They hired a new part-time children's room assistant. I guess the baby story time has grown to sixty-five, they said, so.
Nice.
Yeah, they, they have a lot of people. They're having two new book groups, uh, a classics, uh, book group, and then also, um, a cinematic book to film. So they would read the book and then watch the movie, basically. They also did talk about the, their budget, um, and, um, they're basically concerned about the health insurance, and they're calculating that, uh, uh, twelve percent. And then others, I guess a slight raise for the stat, basically. So that, that was the library. And then, on Monday, the seventeenth, um, I attended, um, at the, for the Board of Ed. They had a, um, built, uh, they're looking at the high school to determine whether they wanna renovate it, or what they wanna do with it. So they had a building conditions assessment and space study done by, um, an architect, and they presented that. And, um, basically showing the different spaces in the school, and what that space is being utilized, and kinda seeing like, oh, this is, you know, I guess their next phase will be like, what, what they need to change it. And a lot of the discussion kinda evolved around, basically, things need to be modernized because teaching is, is different now. The kids have laptops, you know, the, the, the way they do, uh, labs is different, all that kinda stuff. So they're trying to figure that out, and they have a, 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 a committee that is, um, in, in place, um, to review that. They also discussed about their budget, basically at a pretty high level, um, and, um, they're gonna start meeting on that, um, pretty soon, um, continue meeting. So that, that's what I have.
Candace?
I have youth and family, so there's a huge, high demand for heating assistance, rental assistance, pantry services, just across our entire community, so numbers are like tripled. The budget, of course, is on everyone's minds. And a question came up in regard to cannabis allocation funds, and how EV chargers are fitting into that criteria, so maybe.
EV chargers?
Something about EV chargers, and that.
The electric vehicle?
Yeah.
Fits into the cannabis?
Yeah, or how that came about. So maybe that'd be a good question for Kevin, when he's here. But I did say that I would bring it up.
I'm not sure I understand the, the question.
Is someone conflating the two, like they're, they're interlinked?
Yeah, they're asking why that money is being utilized, or what paid for the, uh, EV chargers?
Oh, we, we had a grant.
Right, well, that's what I thought, too. But something about some sort of money is being allocated, and we can talk to Kevin about it, and ask for some, for some clarity on it.
Yeah, no, we had a grant for that, didn't cost us anything, and, uh, eventually it'll become, it's a little bit of a revenue stream right now, but, you know.
Yeah.
Maybe a ninety bucks, a hundred bucks a month.
We're gonna get some clarity on it, and, um.
Yeah, but it has nothing to do with the cannabis.
And we'll find out, okay? Holiday assistance is booming. Let's see, we also had Park and Rec. So there's a possible creation of a multi-sport field committee, so that will be pretty big. It's like twenty-six acres off of Roxbury Road that they're looking at. Possible creation of Cook's Plaiscape, uh, replacement committee, too. So, lots going on over there, and budget talks, and also Doug Park. Doug Park where, uh, and how they move forward after, um, being denied, right?
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Jason?
Uh, yes, the harbor asset, that's right, Harbor Management Shellfish Commission. There was a lengthy discussion about requiring folks who get moorings to carry liability insurance, or proof of liability insurance, in order to get approved to have a moor. So, former harbor master, uh, Ron Johnson, um, did some extensive research, uh, and, and brought to the board. And the board commission seemed to think that it would be a good idea to do this going forward. Now, the reason I bring it to you guys is because they believe that in order to make this happen, in order to require people to carry this insurance, there would have to be a change to their ordinances, which has to come before Board of Selectmen.
And what would the insurance be, I'm sorry, they carry well?
If, in case a boat breaks loose and goes onto a beach or something.
And what's the insurance called, though, would they?
Uh, so it would be like boater's liability insurance. So i- if somebody's anchor breaks and they come up on shore and do some damage, they could just skip town and leave us to have to deal with that, or if a boat sinks. And apparently, this is.
We had that situation last year.
It's, it's becoming more and more prevalent. Um, I'm not really sure why, I know one at the commission was able to tell me why, but, um, this seems to be something that is increasing, and that we should kind of get out ahead of it, and that these insurance policies are actually fairly inexpensive. I'm, I'm digressing. The reason I'm bringing it here is because, uh, they believe Board of Selectmen needs to intervene to help them approve the ordinances. And we weren't sure, you know, if, if this is something, uh, Town Council should help with, but it just seemed like a bigger issue than just what we could do in that room at that moment.
So is the ordinance, is there an ordinance in place that needs to be like amended, is that what you're saying?
Yes, and, but that we are the body that has to do that.
No, no, yeah, I got that part.
And Ron, I think, sent a memo to you, Dan, and spoke to you about it, and he just asked that I put that back on your radar, that they want. that they want some sort of insurance structure around moorings.
Yeah, I have discussed it. I'm not sure if it was Ron. I did discuss it with one of the members. Who's the current chairman?
Steve. Steve Dinsmore is the chair.
But I don't want to interrupt you, but can I add?
That's it.
Yeah, so the, yeah, the issue is, and we we, you know, we had this last year where a boat breaks free, it gets stranded, and it's near a beach, and it starts to break up, and you have fiberglass splinters all over the place, and it's it's it could really be a nightmare. And the problem with the moorings are it's it's not just, yeah, occasionally you might have one boat that breaks loose. But if you had a major storm where you have, you know, a dozen boats that have broken loose, and now you have a dozen boats that need to be removed, the last boat costs us, you know, over thirty thousand dollars to get rid of it. If you had ten boats, you know, that that happened to in a huge storm, we would be hard-pressed to cover that liability. So the thought is, if you require those that are on moorings specifically to have a liability policy to make the town hall if the the boat breaks free and and has to be removed and we have to pay for it, you know, it it's something that might make very good sense and is worth, you know, a thorough discussion. So it's an important issue and one that I think we need to figure, how do, we got to figure out how to follow up with them.
So I think the process as as of last night was Steve Dinsmore is going to put it on the agenda.
Their agenda?
Yes, for the next time to have a public hearing or just to let people know that this is going to be considered, come up for a motion, and then they'll have the public hearing. And in that time, at some point, Town Council can intervene and say, no, 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 we have to do it this way.
Yeah.
So that's where they're going right now until they're stopped by, you know, an alternating idea.
I think it's a good discussion to have, and I think it's an exposure that we have. It's, you know, coastal town.
Yeah. And just shout out to those guys. They did a wonderful job. They're they know their business inside and out, and I was really impressed with the the quality of their deliberations.
Yeah, there's a lot to it.
So, Dan, real quickly, I just want to go back to all that cannabis because you prompted me to go look, right? Because it was almost like I had two heads. So EV charger stations, fifteen hundred dollars from the Town of Eastlime Office of First Selectmen Proposed Budget for local cannabis tax. So hopefully I didn't say it wrong, but fifteen hundred dollars for EV charger stations. That's what I'm staring at. So I don't understand that, and I go, I don't think they understood it either. So if we could just get some clarification on it, it'd be great.
So what you're reading, why don't you send it?
Because nobody understood it, and I couldn't, I I have no, I don't know what to say because my understanding of it was that the EV chargers were fully grant-funded. That was.
So the budget proposal for cannabis.
And I don't think you can use.
Weight point signage.
Well, that was, no, well, that's why I said. There's a criteria, right, well, that's why I'm bringing it up because it just didn't sit right with me.
What's it say, the chargers?
Top line.
All right.
Top line, so it just didn't make sense to me.
Oh.
And I'm like a dog.
No, no, okay, so it's weight point signage. So we would use some of the cannabis money to have signs to direct people to where our elect, our chargers are. We're not paying for the chargers themselves.
Okay.
So.
But does that really fall into the criteria is the question? You can you can think about it. You don't have to answer now, but I don't think that it falls into that criteria, and I don't think others do either, so.
No, I guess that's a good question, but it isn't the chargers.
Does it really meet the criteria?
Maybe it doesn't, but it it's not to pay for the chargers themselves. It's to have signage that there are chargers.
For the chargers.
Yeah, it's the, yeah.
Didn't we already do that with signage around town?
No, it would be signage to direct people that we have chargers for the the EV charger.
Right, but I thought we did that in previously, in our previous administration, we did that. We had.
We we, yeah, that's what we we reserved some funds from the cannabis money apparently to, for the signs for that.
But the signs never went up?
I don't know what the status of the signs is. But yeah, well, we got, yeah, I mean, maybe that's not appropriate to come out of that fund. I I see what you're saying, but we're not paying for the.
Well, Kevin's going to be at the next meeting, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, my turn.
Go ahead.
All right, as I sign off tonight, I I I have a little issue I think needs to be dealt with. As you all know, I don't know party. I'm bipartisan. I will try to do what's best for the town. And, no, I'm serious. You you should all know that, but I've worked with you two years. But however, an issue has raised its head that I think I need to make known before I depart, that I'd like to help handle, but I won't be able to. After the last Planning Commission meeting, I received three, three and a half, four phone calls regarding a potential conflict of interest. And that'd be Representative Menipase on the Planning Commission and a state representative talking about some of the bills regarding planning and zoning. And it's legal. I did a lot of research on this. It's legal. It can be done. But however, there'll be many chances to abstain or excuse yourself from voting because of partiality. Someone becomes direct in conflict with our town and our zoning planning policies versus what the state is trying to. And and Mr. Menipase is even co-sponsor on one of those bills. He was two, but now one. He's been removed from one. I don't know. I'm not sure. But I'm just saying to you, I want to make you aware that zoning agrees, planning agrees, our boards here, that, yeah, there's 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 a conflict of interest. And I just want to let you know that that's, we we've had enough problems to deal with in the last couple of years. And just to address it and try to be, Jason, lead the way, whatever, just try to try to handle it and and the best way possible to make sure that it's not a conflict of interest when you're making these decisions, so they don't have to go revisit them again. That's all. So when you vote on something, have it stick and have it legal and have it nonpartisan.
So if something comes up that would impact, I guess, the housing or whatever state representative Menipase is involved in, he could recuse himself from that discussion and?
Perfect, perfect example, housing, yes. And I just want to make that known so it's not a train wreck to you because it's been brought to me as the ex officio for planning.
Appreciate your comments, Don, always.
Okay, thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
Can I say?
Okay. Do we have anyone else that for ex officio? I do. I have an ex officio, unless there's anyone else. So I did attend the Police Commission the other night, and a couple of things that I'm really happy to hear about. Police Department is rolling out a Handle With Care Resource for children that, you know, are acting out and have, you know, been victims of trauma. And it's a program to try to, you know, if they encounter a child that they know has suffered some sort of trauma, to to be more careful. They're they're careful anyhow, but to give them some special attention. And I think that's a wonderful program. I applaud our chief for for being in favor of that and supporting that in the police department. So I think that's a really great thing. And and the other thing is, we'll talk about, you know, we've heard about the radio system that has never worked the way it should and and is a safety issue. It's a public safety issue. And I want to thank the chief again. You know, he has stepped up and stepped in and has worked with our radio committee and has really been a driving force and has given us great insight and energy to beginning to really solve the problem. And we had these radios, you know, four hundred thou, over four hundred thousand dollars for these Harris radios that we we were under the belief that they couldn't be made useful, that there was some programming issue, copyright issue. And the chief has found out that that's not the case, and they're on the way to being programmed. I think they are programmed, and now we're just waiting for the state of Connecticut to accept our our menu of frequencies that we're proposing. You know, that state has to make sure that if we're using a particular frequency band on the radio, it doesn't interfere with maybe some Monville frequency or Salem. So they have to be careful, but they are looking at that right now. And once we get that approval from the state, then we can go live with those radios. Am I correct on that?
That's right.
Yeah, so it's a wonderful thing. It was, you know, four hundred thousand bucks that we thought was wasted, and now it's not wasted. And will go a long way to get us to the state system and really moving forward. So I want to publicly thank you, chief, for really being involved with that and getting us going. So that's my ex officio report. Next on the agenda, it looks like it's the first selectmen's report. So, Don, I want to thank you. It's been a pleasure to serve on this board with you. One of the best things is I've made a new friend. You're a good guy. You've always had the best interests of the town at heart. And no matter what we were facing here, that was always a driving force with any anything that, decisions or comments that you made. And I appreciate that very much. I enjoy your perspective. I enjoy you as a person and a friend, and I hope we keep in touch after we leave here tonight.
Always here to help.
Thank you. And I appreciate that very much, so. Thank you, Don. Some comments. We have the road project, Route one sixty-one. Some details, if you're interested. They are now seventy-three percent complete with that project. What you see as you drive down there represents about a hundred and sixteen million dollars of the total project. So there's, you know, maybe about another fifty million to go before they're done. You're going to see, you know, that that improvement in the transportation infrastructure has really transformed that end of town. Southbound exit seventy-five, that's going to be opened up probably tomorrow or Friday this week. They they had said the end of this week, the new exit seventy-five will be will be open. We won't see any more significant interruption on Route one sixty-one until March. And that's when they will be beginning to put the steel up for that final third section of the bridge. So that'll be one of those situations where they have to block the road off at night, where they have crane lifting the steel. And it will impact our our fire service budget a little bit during that time because we have to have firefighters on either side of that bridge. So if there's a situation, you know, if they can't get through, we have to have a full complement on either side. So they will alert us to when that that's going to happen. But most of the work, you'll be able to see them putting up the sidewalls over the next couple of months. And they they have made a request to Manafort Brothers to see if they can get them to work throughout the winter so to keep this thing on target and so that it's done a year from now, in November. That's the target date. So that's what's going on there. The townwide food drive, it was very successful, and Karen Scher received significant donations from the various departments in town. So we have a very generous group that works for the town here, and I want to thank all of them that contributed. And it was a great initiative, and I think it's still going on if you want to bring food to the drop-off box. Couple of things going on coming up. There's the buoys by the bay this Friday night at five thirty. That'll be down on the green at the end of Pennsylvania Avenue, and where they have the decorated buoys. It'll be on the trees. And it's it's a nice evening, so I hope a lot of people can attend that. And then, of course, we have the light parade that's coming up on December thirteenth in the evening. And then there's the, it's called the Niantic Jingle, is that you right? Niantic Jingle five K, the same day, but in the morning. So that's what's going on there.
You can join our team if you'd like.
Me?
Jamie and I have.
Can I ride my little electric bike?
You have to choose whether or not you're naughty or nice.
Ah, well, I'm I'm not very nice, but anyhow. So, all right. So I think that's it for me. There's, I don't think there's any communications, any public comment?
We've exhausted everyone.
All right.
No, 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 we got someone.
Oh, we do? I'm sorry.
No, no worries. Thank you so much.
Grace, hello.
I apologize that I'm grossly underdressed. Unfortunately, my frame of reference for formality is Park and Rec, so admittedly. Good evening. Thank you all so much. My name is Caroline Ferma. I'm here on behalf of the Baypoint Tenants Union on Main Street, representing more than forty households. As some or perhaps all of you know, for over a year, tenants at Baypoint have experienced severe rent increases, in some cases up to a thousand dollars per household per month, and that's an increase not representative of the actual rent, along with long delays in completing repairs, major difficulties contacting management, and many other issues. These issues have already caused significant stress for many individuals, many of whom are seniors and long-term residents at our apartments. As you also may know, recently Alpha Capital, the owner of our building, notified every household of their plan to convert all sixty apartments to condominiums as early as January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. This announcement has obviously created deep anxiety and uncertainty among all of our residents in the community. Many of those who I call my neighbors have lived in Eastlime for decades, and all of us now face the real possibility of being priced out of our own community. Alpha Capital claims that this conversion will, and these are their words, provide a pathway to homeownership. For many people, myself included, this is not a reality for a number of reasons. Some people are not in a financial position to purchase a condo. Some people are at a place in life where they would rather rent than own. And frankly, above all, we don't have confidence in Alpha Capital based on the challenges that we've already experienced as a community. We respectfully ask the board to oppose any requests from Alpha Capital to convert these homes into condos and to use any authority or influence available to protect tenants from displacement. Dozens of residents are at risk of losing stable housing, and the community stands to lose neighbors, workers, and families who contribute to this community in countless ways. Thank you so much for your time and for considering the impact this will have on our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And my response is that we are aware of the situation. Yes, thank you. Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn the Eastlime Board of Selectmen meeting of November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five at eight thirty P M.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any objections? Motion carries. All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody.